For the record, it's Thursday, October 12th, 2017. In time for the regular meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. I will first, or first will be the pledge to our flag. Councilmember Mark Hart, would you lead us?
I'd be glad to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lyle. And for the record, we have five council members present. Councilmember Harold is on the phone, and Councilmember Huffaker is excused. Consent items, the first item on our agenda this evening is the consent items, which includes this evening's agenda, the vouchers, and the minutes from the previous meeting, and the resolution.
Your honor, I'd make a motion that we adopt the consent items consisting of this evening's agenda, the vouchers, and minutes from previous meetings, and Resolution 2017-50 declaring certain personal property surplus to the needs of the city of Wenatchee, and authorizing the Department of Information Systems to dispose of the personal property identified herein.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Bailey, to adopt this evening's consent items, including the agenda, vouchers, the minutes from the previous meeting, and Resolution 2017-50. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on this evening's agenda is citizen comment. This would be a time if any member of the audience would like to address the council on any particular item. We'd give you three minutes, and ask that you give us your name and address for the record. Seen, oh, Manuel. I didn't see you hiding behind Alan Walker. Lyle said it was the glare. I didn't say it was the glare. That was Lyle throwing me down. Manuel, how are you, sir?
Good, Frank, and you?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Okay, my name is Manuel Valencia, and I represent the South Wenatchee United Neighborhood Association. And this organization wants to say thank you very much for continuous progress to the sidewalks in the South Chelan, and also the South Mission in the east side, in the Lincoln Park. And we want to say thank you, and thank you very much for all the progress. The people surrounds are happy for the illumination. And also, we want to invite you and the members to the event. We have the event, and the third event, the South Wenatchee, we made again for this time in the Med Howe Park. And I want to invite you.
Okay, perfect. And when is that, Manuel?
This Saturday, 1:00 to 6:00. And this is for you.
Okay, here, come on up. Bring it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
And we've got more sidewalks for you in South Wenatchee. We're just getting warmed up, so. Thanks, Manuel. Anybody else wish to address the council on any particular items? Seeing no takers, we'll move on to our presentations. We have two this evening. The first regarding Make a Difference Day. Who's got that proclamation?
I do.
Councilmember Kulas?
Make a Difference Day, the national day of doing good. Whereas this is the 27th year for Make a Difference Day, whereas each year, thousands of people throughout the greater Wenatchee Valley join in this effort to make the place we live better for everyone. Whereas bridges between communities have been lit, parks have been renovated, food banks have been filled, social service programs have been boosted, hiking trails have been restored, graffiti has been removed, home repairs have been done for the elderly and disabled, ballparks have been improved, and neighborhoods have been cleaned and celebrated together. It is no small effort by a huge number of people, neighborhoods, schools, agencies, businesses, churches, and organizations. We join efforts with each other for the good of each other. Whereas we invite everyone to find a project at www.wenatchiemkdd.com, or post the project there. Whereas we invite people to spend time Saturday, October 28th, doing a good deed, large or small, that makes a difference in our community or the lives of the people in it. Whereas we invite the people in the Wenatchee Valley to act on this motto, "When there's a need, do a good deed." Now therefore, I, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim Saturday, the 28th of October, 2017, Make a Difference Day in the city of Wenatchee, and encourage the citizens of this beautiful valley to join in this effort to make the place we live better for everyone. In witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 12th day of October, 2017. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kulas. Margie, how are you?
Thanks.
Nice to see you again.
Little call up to the center, please. Center, please.
So thank you again for doing that.
You're welcome. Laura was supposed to be here.
She'll probably all make a difference someplace.
I have some flyers on the back of our table.
Perfect. All right, thanks, Margie. And our next presentation is regarding United Way Month proclamation. Who's got that one?
I do.
Councilmember Mark Hart?
Whereas United Way of Chelan and Douglas County fights for the health, education, and financial stability of every person in every community, and whereas United Way has served the people of the region for over 75 years, and whereas United Way provides the most efficient utilization of convening resources and people to assess and respond to community-identified needs and focus areas, whereas change doesn't happen alone. We have one life. To live better, we must live united. Therefore, be it resolved that the Wenatchee City Council designate the month of October as United Way Month. And be it further resolved that the Wenatchee City Council urge all individuals and businesses to support the efforts of United Way by giving, volunteering, and/or advocating. Therefore, I, Frank Coontz, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, in the county of Chelan, in the state of Washington, on behalf of the people of Wenatchee, express our appreciation to the United Way volunteers, donors, and organizations working collaboratively for the education, health, and financial stability of every person as we grow and work for a better future. In witness whereof, I have here unto to describe my hand and cause the great seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed this 12th day of October, 2017. Mayor Frank Coontz, city of Wenatchee.
Thank you, Lyle. Alan, Jerlee, come on up. How you guys doing?
Good.
Hi.
Councilwoman.
Linda's with you in spirit.
I'm here.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. And I'm going to leave some presents behind. You'll probably want to get Linda's autograph. So Linda is one half of our campaign chair team this year, along with Jerlee. And so we have the city of Wenatchee Council and the city of East Wenatchee Council representing us this year.
Thank you, Alan.
There's Connor, and I know Allison and Brooke are going to be spearheading things up here, but I'll just leave you all present, too.
I see a few members of our city staff on your board of directors here, too.
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth Asparza, one of our board members.
Ruth, and a Brooklyn, and a Jim West. I see pictures of them all here. Well, thanks, guys. Appreciate you being here.
Enjoy the rest.
Thank you.
I have to say that I've got another meeting, so.
We've heard that before.
All right, action items this evening. The first is regarding an appointment to the Arts, Recreation, and Parks Commission. And I know Dave is still out, so.
I don't have Dave's shoes, but you can't fill those shoes. So Dave is out, and he asked for me to present this resolution appointing a new Parks Board member. As you know, we had Sean Kester leave. We were really sad to see him go, but I think they are excited to have Patrick Farah be appointed. He was interviewed at their last regular meeting. He's a land planner and environmental designer, and has volunteered extensively. So they interviewed him at their last meeting and recommended him from appointment. So we would ask that you approve Resolution 2017-49.
All right, any questions, council? If not, we entertain a motion.
Your honor, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-49, appointing a member to the Wenatchee Arts, Recreation, and Parks Commission, Patrick Farah.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember, Asparza, second by Councilmember Mark Hart, to appoint Patrick Farah to the Parks Board, adopting Resolution 2017-49. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. I like his application. I like his handwriting.
Yeah.
Interesting, huh?
Yes, yeah. Second item would be regarding application to Curb for some additional money. So Steve King.
Not great.
Always have our hands out.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Steve King, Economic Development Director. Back in, I think it was June, the council adopted a resolution that support that was required for application of curb funding, in which we requested, I think it was 1.4 million in curb funding. And that was to help us with some of the right-of-way and building tear-down in the right-of-way in this Stamillo area where the fires were. And then we also were looking at building an at-grade rail crossing there where the McKittrick Street extension is planned. We, the capital budget didn't pass, and so Curb didn't take any new applications. And we were put on hold, or until just about two weeks ago, I got an email, and Curb said, "We have a project withdrawal. Is the city interested in $813,000?" And I said, "I think we probably would be interested." And so then last week, we got another email that said, "We'd like to add another $150,000." I said, "I'm pretty sure we'll still be interested in that." So what we need to do is redo this resolution that was adopted earlier that identifies a new amount. It's $113,000 in grant, and the rest, the remainder, is low-interest loan, 2.5 percent loan. So we're recommending that we, council authorize or adopt or pass this resolution.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2017-33 in support of committed partner of application to Community Economic revitalization Board for funding from the Department of Commerce to assist in the financing and construction of McKittrick Street extension.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Mark Hart, to adopt Resolution 2017-33 supporting a curb application from the Department of Commerce to help with the McKittrick Street extension. Any discussion? Questions for Steve?
Steve, the total amount was why he kind of broke it down to the first part and the second part, but the total would be roughly a million?
Yeah, just shy of a million. $973,000, yeah. And I should note that the, I adjusted the application. We will not build an at-grade crossing. This will be just to acquire the right-of-way.
Right.
Yep.
And then the second question I had was on the diagram there where it cuts across to the building there and then intersects with Miller there where the regrade. And then, excuse me, I assume what we're looking at there is the kind of the new version of that, what's going, ultimately becomes the Parkway, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Because we'd made some changes in that design there at some point. So this is the new?
This is the new version.
Okay.
The original Confluence Parkway was up, would have taken out the rest of the building.
Yeah.
And so we've pushed it over close, but flattened the curve out a little bit. So it's going to handle an intersection.
We had a couple meetings with Stamillo and their attorneys, and they really wanted this design of Confluence Parkway. They wanted the use of that land. The original one would have cut really close to that front of the building. And so we worked with them and came up with, you know, we asked for the curvatures and stuff. So we worked with them to get this, in a way, I mean, in a way to get it the way it was. So I think it was a reasonable compromise. Different, though, than the original map drawings that we showed you a year or so ago.
Yeah. That's fine. It's just, good. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Steve. So, hi Mitch. You look more like Matt, but, you know.
Matt Leonard, Public Works Director, filling in for Mitch. Mitch couldn't make it today. He's probably already started with Douglas County. I don't know. So what we have today is an extension to the Coleman Oil Agreement. So this, you guys remember this, the leaking storage tank. We gave them a six-month permit to discharge clean groundwater to the Wheat Waste Water Treatment Plant, and they've asked for a six-month extension. The first six months have gone really well. They've done all, I think there's 10 tests that we require them to get. And they've been working with our utility staff, Mitch and Jessica, on getting those permits before they discharged the plant and everything. We haven't had any issues yet. All the tests have been good. So don't really see any reason why we wouldn't keep working with them on getting that site cleaned up. And another six months to let them do that. We're just, I think we're charging them the standard utility rates plus a 15 percent admin fee.
Do we know whether this is going to take a long time to clean up? Or is there some thought they might have it done in the next six months?
Yeah, I guess I don't know at all on the, they've only done five discharges, I think, I believe. So it's a slow process, I think.
Yeah, it's kind of going to be my question, you know, is this something that's?
We should be looking for a longer?
Has an end to it? Or is this something that may, I mean, have they actually solved or cured the problem? Use the term mitigation, which leaves room for a lot of other things to keep on giving here. But are we, do we have an end game on this thing?
I honestly haven't been in touch with Coleman Oil. I don't know.
I think what we do know is it's no longer leaking. And so we got to just clean up the stuff, and it's going to take a while. I don't know what a while means. I actually like six-month contracts because it holds them to having to adhere and work with our staff. If we do three or four of them, I guess I'm okay with it.
That's kind of what I think staff is thinking of. If we just keep doing six months, so that way we can kind of hold them compliant with our testing. Because it is pretty costly, all the tests we require them to do. So they would like to, if they probably had a two-year contract, they might start skipping out on that and being?
And they want to get it clean, right? They've got to, that's the interest in making that thing clean, so. Yeah, and maybe if, Matt, if we do another one of these, it'd be nice if Jessica or someone would come and then kind of give us up to speed.
Yeah, Mitch knew more about it. He just, at the last second.
Just if we do another one, yeah, just.
Okay, all right, we'll do.
Not much of an alternative.
No.
I mean, we are. We are an infrastructure provider, and as long as they meet our rules. Because our goal is not to have stuff get into the Columbia River and other groundwater.
Yeah.
Okay, I entertain a motion if we had one.
Your honor, I'd move that we, the city council to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement for temporary discharge of treated groundwater to the city of Wenatchee publicly-owned treatment works.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Poyer to authorize the mayor to, mayor signature on the temporary discharge with Coleman Oil. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Matt. Gary Owen. Award a bid for a sidewalk project.
City Mayor and council members. I'm Gary, Gary Owen, city engineer. And I have a request for you guys to authorize the mayor to award a construction contract for our Lewis and Clark Elementary Safe Routes project. And, sorry, I don't know if you guys got the copy of the bid tabs for this? It's not in there.
I don't see it in here.
I apologize for that. I just noticed that this afternoon, and I printed it out for myself. Be happy to pass it around. We did get seven bids, and fortunately, the lowest one is actually below our engineers' estimate, and the others fall well in line. So we got, this is a good time of year to be out in this bidding climate. So we feel that we did really well, and we got good bids. And we needed to bid it now for federal funding purposes, even though we're not going to give notice to proceed to these folks until just about the time school's out, so we can hopefully fit all this construction work in there on Princeton before school starts again next fall. Any questions on the project, or?
I think we've reviewed it more than once.
I've been here a few times. You know, we have the school district in our local, you know. They're happy with the numbers that came out on their end for the work that they're going to be paying for under the contract. And it's all come together. Not as fast as we would like, like most of our projects, but the right-of-way came together better on this than many, and.
Did we have much right-of-way to gain, to acquire on the east side of Princeton?
Every parcel from the corner of Spring Water to the back entrance to the mall.
Yeah.
We had to acquire.
Four or five parcels in there. I think one gentleman owned a couple different ones in there.
Yeah. I think it was only three, three or four property owners. But yeah, it went very smoothly. So it'll be a nice, I mean, it's a nice improvement for those properties.
Yeah, and it's nice to do this when school's not in session. It'll just be a lot nicer.
Yeah.
All right, I entertain a motion.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to award the contract for the construction of the Lewis and Clark Elementary Sidewalk Improvement Project, 1521, to J. and K. Earthworks in the amount of $767,732.16, and authorize mayor to approve the construction contract.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Asparza, second by Councilmember Bailey to award the contract for the Lewis and Clark Elementary Sidewalk Project to J. and K. Earthworks, and authorize the mayor's signature on those construction contracts. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Next item is our 2018 budget. So Brad, why don't you come on up and I'll tee it off. We've gone through pretty much our normal budget process, wherein we just took the 2017 budget, added the normal cost of living increases and so forth that Brad will go over with you. We then sat down with all the department heads. The finance committee did. We did a list of asks. There was a lot of discussion. We funded the ones that were clearly the ones that the committee asked us to fund. They asked staff and myself to go back and look at some other ones. So today, we've got a list of those that got funded and those that didn't got funded. We have a preliminary balanced budget for our reoccurring revenue and reoccurring expenses. And so Brad will go over the revenue and some of the expense stuff, and then we'll share in going over what expenses, what got funded and what didn't, at least for this preliminary round. So Brad, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Brad Posey-Jack, Finance Director. So as the mayor said, we started the 2018 budget basically by rolling over the 2017 budget. And then any of the capital projects that were built in, the one-time expenses that were built into the 2017 budget, we removed those from the 2018 budget. We looked at salaries and benefits. We projected those out for 2018. Some of the key items on benefits were the retirement rates increased by 13 percent. One of the medical plans that we have increased by 7 percent, and the other one increased by 13 percent. So the benefits had some, had some big increases in them. The, any of the contracts that we have, debt payments, interfund allocations, other obligations that we have that are just, that we don't really have much choice, but we end up increasing those, they were automatically increased. And then we looked at the, looking at the historic trends of each revenue source that we have. We went and projected those for the 2018 budget. And so that's, I think you've got a summary budget in front of you. And that's what the first column of the preliminary, or I guess it's the third column, that says preliminary budget. That is, that's basically our basic operating budget for the general fund that we have. And so one of the significant changes in the 2018 budget was our property tax revenue. So in the, in 2017, I think, over the last few years, it's been moving more into the direction that more of our property tax gets transferred out to the streets. And so in 2017, all the property tax comes into the general fund, and then everything except $750,000 was transferred out to the streets. Well, in the 2018 budget, the mayor wanted to build so that, so that every penny of that property tax went out to the streets. And so we've got that, basically, property tax coming in. The general fund goes straight out to the street fund for the 2018 budget. That ends up being basically a shift of $750,000 of general fund money going to streets now. And in total, the property taxes, we're estimating it 3.3 million for 2018, which is just a modest 2.5 percent increase over the 2017 budget. Other revenues, recurring sales tax is projected, is projected for 2017 to come in around 8.9 million. So we budgeted an even $9 million for next year. So we're imagining things are going to be about the same next year as they are this year. Same story on the one-time sales tax. There are several construction projects, whether it's the waterfront, the multifamily units that are going in, some of the redevelopment going on on North Wenatchee Avenue. So we're thinking that our one-time sales tax, which we have budgeted around $500,000, will be the same in 18 as it was in 17. Utility taxes, they are, they're a bit higher, due in part to the 6 percent increase in the sewer, in the sewer fees. That trickles down to the utility taxes, which end up helping out the general fund alongside the other regular utility rate increases, just the standard, whether they're the 1 percent or 3 percent, whatever the regular utility rates are. And then permit revenue is being, is actually being budgeted a little bit less than what we expect to receive in 2017. And that, the reason for that is, we're talking to Glenn. In 2016, it sounded like there were a lot of pre-application meetings with, for projects that were going to affect 2017. And so they were actually permitted in 2017, and we got the revenue. Well, in 2017, we haven't had as many of the pre-application meetings. And so we don't think that our actual permit revenue will be quite as high in 2018. But there will be a lot of construction, and the code department will end up having to do a lot of work in 18, even though the revenue came in in 17. Is that fair? So then, once we had, so basically, that's our preliminary operating budget. And then, at that point, we requested of the department directors to provide requests of things that they want, additions that they wanted in 2018. So at a very long finance committee meeting a couple weeks ago, we reviewed all of the requests and received input from the finance committee members and from the department directors. And then that, then meeting with the mayor and looking at those again and trying to take that input, there was an addition of $181,000 of reoccurring expenses and $413,000 of one-time expenses that were added on to that that kind of base budget. And then in addition, outside of the general fund, there was another five hundred and eighty-eight thousand of one-time um of yeah, of I guess, uh requests that were added to to the twenty eighteen budget. So I didn't know at if the if mayor, if you wanted to touch on some of those requests?
Yeah, I'll touch on. I think you all got emails of the list of stuff that we had uh had gone through. And um I will say on the utility side, we did fund, I think, three uh utility employees. It's almost all paid for utility, a little bit out of the general fund. Uh, the two major general fund requests were Parks Coordinator and then Glenn asked for another planner. Both of those, we've decided to kind of kick into the middle of next year and kind of see where things kind of stand. Uh, most of the other stuff was um was accepted. We did uh a couple of things I've, you know, the the there was a request for the pool to stay open longer because the Eastmont uh pool is going to go under some remodeling. And although I took it out of the requests, uh I've made it clear to staff that if there's a partnership between the school district and the East One Anchee Metropolitan Parks District and the city to leave our pool open and they want to help share in some of the costs, I'm more than willing to listen to that. But I've taken it out of the budget. Uh, we have some money in for uh some uh some cameras, some security cameras in different locations. I've asked our chief of police to come to us first part of next year and kind of go over what that program looks like for us. Where are the cameras? How are they working? What's the best way to to spend some money? I think they're very useful tools. I just want to make sure that if we're putting new ones in, they're in the right spots. And uh so he's going to come to us in January. With that, we've we've went ahead and budgeted those. We've got some tree replacements in here. We've done some great work on picnic tables at the parks and we're going to continue to fund those. Uh, Glenn's asked for a housing code update, so we've given him a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for that. Most of the rest of the stuff, I think, was was pretty clear. We've got uh some money in for the city attorneys. They asked for more than they got, but we gave them more than we're contractually obligated to, so we've kind of split the baby in half. I'd say a couple of things, we haven't got to the finish line yet and we're a little, I don't say concerned about them, but we don't have a jail contract. Uh, we're just not quite seeing eye to eye with the county right now. I we're going to get one done. Uh, our numbers are continuing to drop and we tend to pay it kind of a fixed fee rate for them. So if you look at our cost per night, it's starting to get up there a little bit and they've asked for an increase to their overall. So we're kind of struggling conceptually with if we have less customers, why are we?
Paying more.
Yeah, we we kind of like the way our contract works for us. And so we're we haven't quite got to the finish line on that one yet. You know, we're going to get a contract with the chamber again. They're going to bring us a three or a four-year contract. I think the parameters of what that would look like are probably pretty well done. Uh, the rest of that money, I think, and Mark can uh talk more about that, is going directly into the convention center. I don't think we've got a bunch of other asks this year, so I think those are the two spots where your hotel multiple tax dollars will go. Let me look at the rest of the stuff, I think is um the police department had a number of asks for the SWAT and training and patrol uniforms and some of that. So we've given them uh Mike Poyer's comment was give them everything they asked, but we found out where chief had actually had the same request in there twice, so we we caught him up. He self-reported, as he said, so he um. So other than that, I think it went, uh I think it's gone pretty well, uh that the anything that the council members uh got excited about. You know, Matt wanted some money for, we don't have any sort of replacement fund for our street light system at all. Our streetlights are um. The traffic signals. And so he asked for a hundred eighty thousand dollars, which is about what it costs to do one signal redo every single year. And we've told him no to this point, but we've also given a lot of extra money to the street department in general. And if he decides that a signal is more important than paving the street, I guess he can make that argument back to us sometime next year. But uh right now, we've we've told him no on that one. Uh, I think everything else is probably in in pretty good shape. I can't think of anything that's um drastically increased or decreased. We do have the million six from the PFD budget to go to our capital facility account in light of maybe a a purchase of the federal building or some stuff like that. So we've got that money set aside. Our balances right now are going to be probably in the over twenty percent. We do have a, we put another half million dollars in the rainy day funds. We're now at a million and a half dollars in a rainy day fund. So we've um I think are continuing to try to set money aside. We know this is we'll slow down at some point and we're doing our best to 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 hold that line. What else am I missing? Allison or Brad?
I was just going to say that um the between now and November sixteenth, when the when the budget's adopted, we'll be adding some of the capital projects because this the budget that you've got is just basically the operating budget for twenty eighteen. And so between in the over the next month, we'll be working with the departments um and finance committee to add in here all the capital, the big capital projects that they want going next year. And um but overall, uh as far as the way our fund balance is looking, it looks like the way when it all plays out, I feel like we'll probably end up being right around the the twenty-two, twenty-five percent of our annual expenses in the general fund. And then plus with the rainy day fund, that ends up really putting us putting us around thirty percent of our actual expenses. And as 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 we heard a comment today from from uh from a Moody's report, is that our 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 reserves that we have are 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 higher than most um most comparable cities across the country. So we've got strong, strong reserves and and I'm hoping they're not they're not exorbitant, but they're just kind of right at the recommended levels. And so that's where we want to try to keep them. And I think the twenty-eight budget is shaping up to keep us right along those lines and that's where I'd like to see us.
Yeah, there's a question I was going to ask you, you know, the in the copy we have in our package here, that all the capital stuff was not there. Does that? Can I assume we're with all the moving parts we've got going here on.
Yeah.
Federal building and the social security and all these kinds of things, that that probably needs to be.
Yeah.
Somewhat robust to to.
Yeah, and I think part of it is just going to be a bit of a leap of faith. You know, we we went through a process in uh last March or April where we had quite a bit of money in our reserve accounts. And so we got some a number of requests. And we agreed to do a lot of them, like these capital requests, but they're not getting them all done this year. You just can't do that many. And so there's this, well, what do we get done in seventeen? What do we improve in seventeen that isn't going to get done till eighteen? And then what are the new projects in eighteen? So it's a little bit of a, and so staff's working on, okay, these got done, these didn't, these have to go back into the eighteen one. And and we're going to have not a problem getting through to what the capital requests are. I think that we've got a really good handle on the finance committee on on what we expect to be coming. We're setting aside, you know, we've got the line of credit already set up for some purchases of property. We'll have, we put six hundred thousand dollars. So of the one point six million from the PFD in twenty seventeen, a million went to Matt for McKittrick Street. And six hundred thousand will end up in that capital facility. And then we'll take the million six from twenty eighteen's PFD. So we've got two point two million as the lead in for the federal building. So I think we're in really good shape uh where with those sorts of numbers. They're they're big numbers and they're scary a little bit. And I have the same, I don't sleep as well at night sometimes, but um I I feel good about the decisions we're making on the capital side in terms of trying to leave our community better off uh with having the city in the middle of of some of these deals. So I I feel good about kind of where we're at. That one's going to be a little bit of a leap of faith of just making sure, you know, ho- hold us accountable to making sure we get you the things we need to get there. But some of it is a little bit of a, we know what's coming and and we'll get it, we'll get it. I think for me, the the biggest thing is making sure that our street fund has the money that it needs to put together a pavement program for the next ten years to start repaving our streets. And I think we're we're eighty-five percent of the way there. And we'll see how far we get between now and December to getting to somewhere between ninety nine, ninety-five percent of the way there. To put put all that money into our street fund, the three point three million in property tax, the five hundred thousand dollars in the twenty-dollar card tab, we're starting to get to a point where we can make a dent. And so the consultants are finishing the update of the pavement. We did it about a year and a half ago and we scored a seventy. And they're coming back and did it again because obviously we had a tough winter and we think we're going to drop quite a bit. So that'll help us decide how quickly we jump into the the next range of whether we go out to the bond market or whether Matt thinks he can just do it all with staff and how we get up to start really paving our streets and making a difference. Because we got to start doing that. So I think that's the that's the big thing for Matt for next year.
The PFD payback, uh what what see we've, this is what, our our second year that we've gotten.
Second big year.
Big year.
Yeah, so the the total debt was about five point six million. We got less than a hundred thousand the first time they paid us. Then we got a million three.
Last year.
And then we got a million six this year. So a million six million. So we've gotten about three of the.
We got about two, two more to go.
So we got a one-sixth this year and a eight, nine, hundred thousand million the following year and then we'll be done. So um pretty remarkable, we've gotten that stuff paid back as quickly as.
As quick as we have, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't think I'd live long enough to see that come back.
No, I, you know, but we always projected these two and three percent sales tax increases, right? And we ended up at ten or twelve percent. And then with old station, all of a sudden, that's really starting to put a dent into the into what that's going on. So it's nice to get that money back and uh it's our job to make sure we spend it accordingly, right? And that we we think about and be really strategic with how we're doing it. So so far, it's gone to roads and it's gone to building, right? And so that's a pretty good way of, yeah, of keeping us in on the capital side and things that will get reimbursed for and can can turn. Anything else, Brad, from your side? After standard wage increases based on contracts or?
Yep, yep. Yeah, yeah, basic, basic cost, the regular cost of living for.
Little bit over two percent, is that what it was?
Two point one five percent based on the the AFSMI contract. And since the 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 police contract isn't isn't finished yet, we don't have.
Right. But you've got a number in there for that.
We do have a number in there, but.
Can you explain that PERS? You said it's thirteen percent. So that's not a locked in number, it just comes to us every year?
No, the state legislature each year, they adopt new new rates based on what the state actuary recommends. And so because because of the the underfunding that has happened over the years with the with PERS one, the the older PERS plan, it's gone, I think at one point it was five percent of your gross earnings and now it's up to thirteen percent or twelve? Yeah, twelve, thirteen, twelve, 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 thirteen percent, somewhere around there. And so it's it's increased quite a bit over the last over the last five or six years. And so that's, I think it jumped from from eleven percent last year to twelve or thirteen percent this year.
Most people are off of PERS one now, I'm guessing. And then now you've got PERS two and three.
Yep, yep, yeah.
Yeah, it gets, it's gets, because somebody's got to be paying for this other stuff happening.
So there there is a piece of that of that percentage that when we're paying retirement for the PERS two and three people, that there is a piece of that that's going into paying off the the PERS one fund. So the PERS two and three funds are fully funded.
Don't be dashing PERS one.
There may be a few. There may be a few PERS one.
Y'all gone now?
Yeah, so so so.
There aren't many.
Yeah. So obviously something, they take money out of our paychecks, Mike, for some of it. And then the city has to put in a contribution, which that city contribution has been increasing as.
Yep.
Yeah. I would say our state is one of the top four or five states in the nation in terms of having a reasonable amount set aside for long-term uh retirement benefits. There's a number of states that are might have forty percent or fifty, or in the mid nineties, I think, last I saw.
Oregon.
Yeah, so um, you know, I think uh we don't expect to have a big state come after us at some point, although these increases are uh expensive, but it's part of, it's no different than paying health insurance or any of the other benefits that we pay our employees. So it's an obligation. Is it thirteen percent's a lot and seven percent on health insurance is a lot?
Yep.
Yeah. What's our health insurance check a month? Is it a million bucks?
I need, I need Dan here for that one. Um, I I don't know offhand.
Not a million, I mean, a hundred grand a month?
I I don't know.
Uh, one question I had, Brad, is on the uh leaf one or left one. Uh, the long-term care as well as the insurance side, I know the are we starting to see the number, the number of people that are drawing on that reduced? I see you.
Ruth Ruth has a term for that. She used it at finance. I didn't use it.
Trying to keep it.
The number, the number of retirees is each year decreases, the number of retirees that we have decreases. Um, so.
In the, in the, in the long-term care, it's what you're budgeting is about half of what it was last year. So I assume that you're.
And I believe, I believe that was because there was um when we have retirees who are in the the long-term care facilities or the what do they call them? In in a long-term care. Assisted living facilities, um that is a huge expense to to the city. And I think we had.
A couple that are no longer in the assisted.
Yeah, I think I think a couple of them are no longer in there. And so we don't expect to have that that expense next year. So that would be the big difference.
That thing over the years has kind of had the opportunity to, you know, it's going down, but there are times when it's.
Where spikes.
We've taken a couple of pretty good hits on that thing, so.
Yeah.
Make sure we're we're covering our covering our backside on this.
We've been doing an actual actuarial study about every two years.
Yep, yep. We're going to be doing, we're going to be asking for another one here in a couple of months.
So what I would say is um if you have any sort of heartache over any of those things, let us know and we'll change it. But otherwise, we will drop into our normal budget process and we'll have adoption on the sixteenth of November. Probably a couple of small changes if we get something different on expenses or something. But I think for the most part, uh what you see here is what you're going to get unless any of you have some sort of something different you want to add or something, let us know and we can work into the system. But I I think we're about as good as we're going to get. All right, thanks Brad.
Thank you.
Thanks Brad.
So a mayor's report, uh Brad kind of mentioned it, but we uh got a rating upgrade from Moody's today. Uh, they posted it shortly afternoon. Roy and and Dave Trigusser have told us they've never seen a city get upgraded four spots. So we got upgraded four spots today from a.
Wow.
B double A one to an A three. And I don't even know how the letters work, but they tell me it was four spots. So uh we did, Brad and I did go to uh San Francisco with Dave and Roy in June and met with Moody's. And uh so long time coming, they finally gave us some upgrades. They they held back for a while. S and P uh saw the cities changing and and kind of went with us for a while. And Moody's kept holding back because we didn't make a certain payment on the bonds for the PFD. So it was nice to finally get us a recognition that things were going in the right direction. Their report's online. I don't know if you've got copies of it, but um you can see a lot of our financial information in there in terms of our reserve accounts. And um I think a couple of things, I mean, they liked our reserve account. They liked the fact that we're not in the fire business anymore. So we don't have the long-term pension liability for our firefighters and some of the other stuff. And we have um councilmatic um capacity for property taxes. I mean, we've put ourselves in a way better spot financially. So uh really good to get that upgrade today. So uh I've gone over twice to Moody's in the six years I've been mayor and got shut out both times. So Brad's the lucky charm. He got us a four grade for that point. So we need Dave's lucky shoes for the RCO grants and we need Brad to get our Moody's ratings up. Allison, what else do we have to report on sort of city stuff? We did meet with Brad Hawkins last week. Uh, got him up to speed on the infra grant. We didn't have a lot of time beyond infra grant, but we did talk about a couple of city issues, trying to get the housing bill brought back. And uh in fact, he got us a letter of support on the infra grant today, so or earlier this week. So that was good. Allison's been getting lots of letters of support. I know we got more to get, but.
Right. They're they're coming in well. I forwarded a couple.
Yeah, so.
I just can't.
That's good.
Hold them back. They're fun, especially uh we were really pleased to see Brad Hawkins' letter. And he really focused in on a couple of um specific items. So he made his letter really unique. That was, that was great. So um and many other letters coming, so.
Yeah, and it's exciting when the governor's office gets excited that we're taking some state funding and trying to use that as a match on the federal dollars. And they're seeing us be creative and trying to really push the envelope. So that's good. That's, I like it when those folks say, yeah, we support you in trying to parlay what we've given you into something much bigger, so. And Steve, you want to give a just a quick update on your trip to DC, you and Matt? They took trip one of, I don't know how many they got to take, but. Why don't you come up to the microphone, you and Matt both, just because we're being recorded?
So last week, we were in DC and uh met with USDOT on Friday as well as the staffers for our legislative delegation, Reichardt, Cantwell, and Murray. And um it was, I think, a really productive uh trip. We started out the trip with a meeting with USDOT and they gave us a debrief on our Fastlane grant last year, which was uh for the McKittrick underpass. And uh effectively, they, the way they do this is staff will rate every grant application either recommended, acceptable, or not recommended. If you're in the first two categories, then it gets elevated uh to the senior review team and on up to the secretary for review. So the key in in this program is to get in those first two categories. And last year's application was rated acceptable, which means it was elevated.
Wasn't it the, just the top one gets elevated?
Right.
Yeah, so ours was, ours wasn't elevated last year.
To the senior team, but it.
Not not to the secretary's desk.
Yeah, not to the secretary. So um so that was good feedback from last year's application. They told us a little bit what we needed to do. And thankfully, this year's application actually addresses um their concerns. And that was how does everything work together? They want to see how the network works. So making it the loop project, we get to show how the connecting Washington funds and and all the projects work together. And um I think that, you know, USDOT can only tell you so much and they're trying to understand Wenatchee. So our goal was make sure you know, they they know who Wenatchee is. And our issues, we're one of eight um urban areas in the nation that is not on an interstate. So we wanted to let them know what our freight needs were and how important that that uh difference is to us. And we also just wanted to start bouncing some ideas about, you know, how we are doing environmental process. And uh they gave us, they gave us some good feedback um as much as they could. And and so, you know.
Yeah, they, yeah, they really got into depth. You could tell they really looked at your application pretty in-depth. They gave us some good insight. They really had detailed in insight into the what we had applied for. And that was kind of their main comment was they didn't really see how the McKittrick, because most of the money was going for the McKittrick grade separation, how that really was going to improve. was going to improve North Wenatchee Avenue, which is where our Connecting Washington fund, matching funds was. So just, I think this run with the going, with the big option, we're going to have, it's going to be really easy to show that that all ties into that whole loop system. And I think they, yeah, they, and they, you know, they talked about, they didn't really seem too concerned about our Connecting Washington funding schedule, because we have, that's going to be a five-year timeline when our matching funds are going to happen. But they weren't really alarmed by that and wanted us to just make sure we had a plan of how we were going to do it.
Yeah, so. Big steps, keep working on the grant application, get letters of support. You turn it in somewhere around the first part of November. And then we're in a waiting time period until we hear from them sometime in the middle of the following year?
Yeah, we hope so. It'd be nice to hear it next spring, but they do have tiger applications and they expect about 800 of those and probably 100 to 150 infra. So they got a lot of paper to go through.
And the, there really isn't waiting in between. We would encourage any, any of our association people, any of our local electeds, anyone who's traveling back to DC to make sure that they're carrying the message. Once the application is turned in, we, we want it to be on their radar screens, so.
And I think, you know, the big thing that came out of the meeting with the different staff was they all were really excited that this was a regional project, that it wasn't something that just Wenatchee was going for, that the whole region was going for, and they were going to make a, a bunch of different agencies happy with this project. I think that was big. That was the first question they all asked us, is who's, is everyone in support of this? Be able to say, yeah, we got all these people that are on board.
Great. All right, anything else, Allison, on the?
So just a reminder, next week of the regional meeting, AWC regional meeting on the 17th, which is Wednesday. And then Thursday, we have.
Do you have it on Wednesday? I have it on Tuesday.
It should be Tuesday, isn't it?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, the 17th.
At the CTC.
Yep.
It's Tuesday. I thought it was Tuesday. I was believing Tammy. I defer to her. And then on Thursday, just a reminder of directors, public safety, council committee and work session.
And what's our items for work session, do we know?
Work session, we will be doing a, a work session on traffic calming and potentially one on housing. We're just waiting to hear. And if not, that one will be bringing another topic to be determined.
Council members, anything on your meetings you're attending and that kind of stuff?
This is Linda. I attended the Rivercom Board Meeting yesterday morning and they did not adopt their budget for next year yet, mostly because there were only four of us there and two of us were alternates and they would have to go through and re-educate us on the whole entire process. So they're going to hold off ratifying your budget until next month.
Linda, did you see my email that Chriselia sent saying they adopted?
I saw, I saw your email and I responded saying they didn't, they didn't pass it. I mean, they didn't vote on it. Did you get it?
I didn't.
Okay.
But they sent out an email saying they passed their budget, so I was just.
They did?
Confused, yes.
That's weird. That's weird because they, they said they were going to wait to, they, they had the budget there and they could have, but they wanted to wait until the other members were there.
All right, thanks, Linda. Anybody else?